Good night, we thank. The United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice.
Want to welcome everybody here this morning, and we have a newly elected official, and we will introduce it as well.
Good morning, everyone, I'm, for those of you that don't know, I'm Mike Watkins, I'll be the new auditor for the county. I'm really looking forward to this, excited about it, and this little background that I've worked with, worked out at Hanson Corporation for over thirty-four years as a human resource manager, and I currently, well, we're celebrating our tenth year part owner of Mini Micro Sports and Gift Shop here on the square, so I look forward to working with everyone in the community and really excited about it.
Thank you for being here. Okay, uh, minute?
Mr. Chairman, has been reviewed.
Thank you.
Minutes, uh, I make a motion to approve a minute.
We have two different ones to debate.
Okay, and that, those are our executive session October the twentieth and regular session October the twentieth. I move to approve both of those. You can go ahead, sorry, you can go back here.
Go on the call.
So feels that with that.
Yeah, I'll, uh, Steve made the motion, I'll second it. Any more discussion, on favor of the motion, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Approved, uh, two of them. And, uh, to mention Mary is on a medical today. Okay, clear. Thank you. County General, fifty-four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-five cents. Court system, three thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Highway Department, twenty thousand seventy-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Sheriff's Department, twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-four cents. ACH, twenty-nine thousand one hundred and twelve dollars seventy-nine cents. CAW dash one, twenty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-nine dollars twenty-seven cents. CAW two, thirty-nine thousand six hundred and twenty-one dollars. CAW three, ACH, twenty-five thousand even. CAW four, eight thousand three hundred dollars and forty-nine cents. This claims for ten twenty-three twenty-twenty, one hundred and seventeen dollars seven hundred and fifty, I'm sorry, one hundred and seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. Wheel tax, eighty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars thirty-seven cents. Payroll for October twenty-third twenty-twenty, three hundred and forty-three thousand twenty-two dollars and sixty-five cents. Payroll deductions to be allowed October twenty-third, hundred and sixty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Inchen claims to be allowed on November the second, twenty-twenty, three hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and five dollars and twenty-eight cents. Pop-up claims can be allowed on October twenty-eighth, one thousand three hundred and fifty-five dollars eighty cents. That's it?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, having reviewed your claims, uh, before the meeting, I'll make a motion to pass the claim.
Motion's been made with Steve, I'll second it. Any discussion, on favor, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, two of them. Animal service. Veterans. Ways and measures. Highway Department.
Good morning.
I knew we could find somebody.
Somebody sure does. Glad to report that the, uh, the final dump truck that we ordered for delivery this year should, uh, it's gonna be delivered the first of next week. Uh, this completes our plan of getting a large headwheeled truck in all of our ten townships, and then we moved some of the single axle trucks into our reserve fleet for patching and various other duties. Uh, they will all be equipped with snow removal equipment, everything. Also, um, well, looking forward is the right word, but looking ahead to bad weather, the salt sand barn is full, uh, we have purchased out of this year's budget, uh, an additional hundred fifteen tons of calcium chloride, which will be in storage in, uh, underground Louisville in the big caverns over there for when we need to live. Other than that, just business as usual, patching roads, ditching, get ready for winter. Any questions?
Thank you, John.
Diane, you want my?
No, no, I'll be it.
I'll stand outside and if somebody else needs to come in.
You sit back near the TV, John. Yeah, I'll sit back near the TV.
Okay, uh, Health Department.
Hello, uh, we're staying super busy with, uh, all the COVID stuff, obviously. We, um, seem to be having a lot of trouble with, um, the State Department of Health that's supposed to be doing the contact tracing, and, um, we're having a little bit of problems with, they're, they're not always exactly right on the quarantine dates, and so, um, I will release something to the press from the CDC guidelines, but we always follow the CDC guidelines, and if you are a positive case, the day that you start the symptoms or the day that you have a positive test is day zero. You go forward ten days and you're out the eleventh day, and there's a lot of discrepancy on that, they don't count that day zero, and then go the full ten days and come out on the eleventh. And then the other problem we're having is that, um, if you are a close contact and you live in the home with the person that is positive, you have to isolate away from them, or else your fourteen days doesn't start until you do isolate away from them. So at times, we see people that live in the same household that have to be in isolation for twenty-four days.
You mentioned ten days, now you're saying fourteen, with, is, are those two different scenarios or?
Yes.
Okay, could you explain the difference?
Sure, if you are a positive case, you are quarantined for fourteen, or, I'm sorry, for ten days, for ten days. So, the reason you're in quarantine is because you're shedding that virus the entire time, okay? Then the people that were exposed to you, they're in quarantine because it can take up to two weeks for them to develop symptoms or become positive. In that time, forty-eight hours before they get sick, is when they start shedding that virus. So that's why they're in quarantine longer than the positive person. But it, there is, does seem a lot of confusion with that, so we're running into a lot of problems with that. We are still doing flu vaccines, which is keeping us busy with that also, and back-to-school shots. As far as the numbers, uh, due to this being so close to the first of the month, we didn't have all our numbers together to give you this time, and then I've got some things that I'm on the agenda for, so I'll discuss that with you later.
Thank you. EMA?
We're continually receiving personal protection equipment from the state. If you ever tried to buy a box of gloves this time of year, you're lucky if you can find them. It used to be they were anywhere from thirteen to fifteen dollars a box of fifty gloves, now it costs anywhere from fifty to forty dollars. It's just terrible, so our biggest dilemma is trying to find gloves. Everybody in the, in the county departments are needing those, and the only access I could get, uh, was small, and you know how these armed owners are all big boys, and they can't wear small gloves. We are continuing to process the, uh, Payers Act funding throughout the county for the different governmental entities, and, uh, that's processing very well, and, uh, we're utilizing that for items such as EMS, it's taking the big hit for this because it's something that they budgeted for, was not allowed, it's allowed for cares, for their ambulances, for ventilators, and it's, it's a good thing that they got it because it's something they need. Personal protection, sanitizing equipment that we're utilizing for the courthouse in here, we have this device back here in the back that checks temperatures, Sheriff's Department's getting on board with this, the Health Department, so we are still acquiring documents to submit for the care's funding to acquire that for our community.
Okay, thank you. Bud Point? EMS?
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, we have our normal monthly report for you guys, just because we've been down in the office and it's still too early in the month. Uh, that's the one other thing I have to report right now is the ambulance that's been ordered will be here probably in December. I've just been talking to the sales representative of the DNR, so he suggested that's gonna be delivered. That doesn't happen, just the busy, our policy cases keep going out, so. Do you have any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Sheriff?
And like the rest of, we don't have much for you this morning, because being the first of the month, we have a copy of the inmate population for you there. We averaged a hundred and four a day for the month of, uh, October. Today, we had a hundred and seven, eighty-four males, twenty-three females. Have, uh, all the work released, uh, that don't give anything again due to the stuff that's going around, so we have to just continue the work release program until, keep everything out.
Okay, thank you. Action?
Park Board, there was a car show out of Park last month, um, in the October, beginning of October, what was that? Beginning of October? Yes. Anyway, um, uh, wasn't very big turnout, which wasn't really expected, with COVID everything going on, uh, was kind of a full day, uh, but they are still planning on having that again next year, trying, I know we've had several, several years where the weather isn't cooperating. Um, as far as the grant, um, project has been approved by DNR, and I'm working on final permitting and gonna send the documents to get it out the bit.
Anyway, can you shake this?
So it looks like on the grant that we're probably, and I know you're moving forward, correct, right?
Yeah, yes, uh, confirming the, the Stormwater Provincial Plan, it's being moved to our uh, CDCD.
And we are able to move into next year on that, so.
Yeah, um, actually, surprisingly, this month was like four inches above normal rain, so the, the, if it continues like this, yeah, it is moving into next year, um, uh, which is not necessarily a warm weather that day. Uh, we have till the end of twenty-one, and we can ask for, uh, uh, extensions if needed, but.
Well, there should be, you know.
Should, should be, no need, don't, you're correct. So, um, uh, should be a pretty good project.
Thank you. Okay, FWCD?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This weekend, we'll be hosting our Bradford pair bounty.
We've come up, we knew better, man.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, we'll be hosting our Bradford pair bounty, where residents of Pike County, Dixie County can, and they show us a picture of their cut-down Bradford pair, which is in their base of species into our area, and we will give them a fruit tree. We have, uh, several species native to our area that hand out, and that's gonna happen this Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
County Engineer?
I'm currently working on our asset management plan for this year, estimate submitted by December first to the LTAP to be eligible for community crossing grant next year, which opened up sometime in January. I did help with, uh, some, some of the smaller towns and stuff, getting community crossing grants submitted in the last month, month and a half. No, went really well. We have, um, made, uh, our cumulative bridge fund, um, just like all our funds, we kind of held a little money back, our cumulative bridge fund's fine, so we did order culverts for next year, um, colors, guard rail, a bridge package, rolling out a box cover to finish out the budget from last year, they basically set this up for next year to do the work. That's all, all going pretty well. We have pre-purchased some millings, um, uh, we've got some from Princeton that, uh, they delivered out there, um, we're trying to take advantage of getting them cheaper than we have in the past, um, and we're averaging three to five dollars a ton keeper, uh, for next year compared to previous years, but that plan's working really well, and, uh, plan for next year, that's the big thing right now for me.
Thank you. Mayor? Regular report.
I have to view this, uh, Chairman.
I have to. Uh, plus report, and I've also viewed that, and, yeah. I have to. Okay, uh, old business, jail, let's go.
It's, uh, it's important to clarify through the record the important steps the commissioners have taken in the new Pittsburgh jail project. The Gibson County Commissioners signed the Stillwell settlement agreement on August twelfth, twenty twenty, and commissioners are obligated to comply with the terms that agreed. On July twenty-first, twenty twenty, the commissioners retained American Construction Point to work with Gibson County Sheriff, and perform a pre-designed multiple options to alleviate the overcrowding that evaluates potential sites or expanding jail. The results of the pre-design presented to the Gibson County Jail Committee on September twenty-third included a two-hundred-and-eight-bed Greenfield twenty-year solution, option one, a hundred-and-ninety-six-bed Greenfield ten-year solution, option two, the expansion of the existing jail to two-hundred-and-eight beds providing twenty-year solution, option three. American Construction Point recommended option one because it was the least expensive to the citizens of the local county over the life of the jail. American Construction Point presented a schedule that included six to seven months of confinement, forty-six weeks for bedding and award, and eighteen months for construction. Construction Point pointed out design would need to begin at once to meet the occupancy date of January eighth, twenty twenty-three, as stipulated in the settlement agreement. To comply with the October thirteen twenty deadline, the settlement agreement commissioned on October sixth said adopt a Greenfield option funded by a combination of cash reserves, head funds, and lift correctional facilities fund. To obtain the financial authority necessary to comply with the terms, commissioners caused Construction Point to present the pre-designed options to the whole county council on October thirteenth. American Construction Point estimated project option one to be forty-one point eight million, option two to be thirty-four point four million, and option three, forty-four point six million. Council adopted resolution endorsing Greenfield option, state funding would be identified as a combination of cash reserves, head funds, and bed corrections. To comply with the settlement agreement, commissioners caused the Gibson County attorney to submit Construction Point pre-designed, county's resolution, and Greenfield site and divocation fund to the federal court on October thirteen, twenty twenty. Gibson County Commissioners are bound by the terms and schedule of the settlement agreement subject to the date of advance of jail project forward, improve a contract entered by Construction Point to deal with the design of the two-hundred-and-eight-bed Greenfield twenty-year solution, option one, with a lead-up alternate to defer ninety-two beds, another lead-up alternate to defer duty correction. Gibson County Commissioners will present on November tenth to Gibson County Council a funding request to begin designing and securing the project. Upon approval of the council approving the funding for the design and land purchase, commissioners will direct American Construction Point and county attorney to secure an option purchase for Greenfield site and complete the engineering evaluation. Upon council approval of funding for design and land purchase, commissioners will begin a selection project for project managers who works in with construction management for the project. Commissioners selection, approval of funding for Gibson County Council, commissioners will direct project manager, manager, construction manager to work with American Construction Point to determine construction timeline to be submitted to the court.
Could you say some time, I'm gonna leave that to it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, as you know, and I'm sure the county attorney will agree that we are under a very tight schedule, uh, to fulfill the, uh, requests and lawsuits, uh, and so there's a couple things that I think that we must do today, because as you know, we have to have this constructed by what day is it, one?
Twenty twenty-three.
Twenty twenty-three. So I make a motion to sign the amendment to the professional services agreement with, uh, American Construction Point contingent upon funding.
Yes, depending on county council for funding.
Because we've got to move forward on this. I make a motion.
Okay, motion's been made, Steve, I'll second it. Any discussion? On favor of the motion, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Both ayes have it, two of them.
And, Mr. Chairman, uh, also, the second thing that, again, to move forward on this as quick as possible, and even if we move immediately, we're still gonna be tight on getting this done, above the island acquisition and so forth, as mentioned in the, uh, attorney's report, I make a motion, uh, that we hire, uh, Paul Green as the marketer of works for the project, for the jail project.
Okay, then, you made a motion.
Yes.
And I'll second that. Any discussion? On favor of that, indicate saying aye.
Uh, both ayes have it, two of them.
Okay, we're gonna go to subdivisions, we've had, uh, subdivisions that have, uh, asked for us to look at and see if I'm taking in the road. Have a couple of few. The, uh, three that we're considering.
Yes. Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, these have been brought, now, and also, there's been a couple others that brought up that we're waiting on information on easements.
Yeah, we're still waiting on data.
And data on those, on those other two, but, uh, but we have looked at the White Church subdivision, the Rector Lake, am I saying that right?
Rector Lake. Oh, I see, taking you on.
And, and the Water Tower Place, uh.
Outside of.
Subdivisions, and.
White Church is, uh, west of Quensham, uh, Rector Lake is, uh, west of Boneville, and, uh, White, uh, Water Tower Place would be west of Hofstadter.
Well, fun, uh, those have been looked at, and, uh, I'll move to, to bring those into the, uh, county, uh, roads.
That's under my motion.
That is my motion.
Okay, motion's been made, Steve, seconded by myself, and, uh, any more discussion? On favor of the motion, indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Both ayes have it.
And we will, uh, keep looking at the others, we don't want the others to feel left out, you know, we'll, we'll keep looking at the other two that.
I know Mary is looking, uh, working with Matt on, uh, the one in, uh, west of Oakland City, and I think there's another one over on sixty-eight that they're looking at.
The Whispering Hills, what's called over in Rogers, and stuff. Okay, and before we go to new business, Mr. Chairman.
No, 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 no. The gentleman's gonna come, and some paper will flow. Thank you, thank you. And, uh, okay, go ahead.
Uh, before we go to the new business, I just wanna bring up, uh, a project that was, uh, brought to the commissioners and sent to the redevelopment commission, uh, using TIP money out at the three-fifty South and Highway forty-one intersection. Uh, we allocated funds, uh, for that redevelopment past, it, it is in operation, uh, or they're actually working on it right now. They've got a thirty-day completion, they started about a week ago, and, uh, so, we know there's been some traffic issues, I haven't heard of any accidents, thankfully. Uh, we think that, we're hoping that the forty-one lane will be able to be open, uh, by the end of, by Saturday, maybe, oh, and, uh, but that's going to increase the availability of traffic coming out of three-fifty going north, you know, before you want twice to be bogged, and we know that there's room going north, so that will help vacate three-fifty South and, uh, even one-hundred East and all the traffic from, whether it be Boot Tech or Millennium Steel or TM and Mine, uh, or any other, we know a lot of people use three-fifty South, whether they work in that area or not, and, uh, so for the good of the county, that has been a very good project, just reporting that it's going well, uh, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. That's all, the old business will go to new business, Diane Hall.
Well, I think the first one we addressed, because she actually came along to, uh, discuss this too, was, you know, uh, we.
White House.
Come in, what's your question? Judy Guard. Your name, then? Judy Guard.
Judy Guard.
I was here two weeks ago, and with anger, it's gonna come back. Okay. The, uh, Board of Health and the Health Officer initiated a policy with the Health Department that we can. that we can mandate face masks in any business that has a food license, because we control the food license. So that is what was issued, where if we get a complaint, we will go out and follow up on the complaint, give them a warning. If they continue to be noncompliant with the face mask, then we can give them a two hundred and fifty dollar fine. If that continues, then we can actually shut the business down if they continue to neglect the mask. Now ideally, that would be just for a short period until I can get their facility cleaned and up to code. But our goal is not to shut down restaurants. Our goal is to make them safe for the public. So that is the one thing we can control. With that being said, as we've asked for your permission in the past, certain county officials have made an ordinance to mandate the mask throughout the county in all businesses. And so that is, I think, what G D. wants to discuss. We have had a lot of community requesting that that be made mandatory in all businesses. However, that would take the county to make the ordinance to do for us to be able to have a mask ordinance in all businesses.
Now, let me get it straight on this. Both ones you've done, that was instituted by your board of directors?
Yes.
And you're utilizing either IC vote or government or government order from the state?
Actually, both. And our policy through our health department. So then to do one for all the businesses, like I said, it has been brought up to several points to revisit this issue with you all, as to make it, obviously, as the epidemic just continues to work in our area, we request that all businesses require masks. And we call all the businesses whenever they're, we get complaints that they're not complying with the mask order. However, unless they have a food license, we're kind of limited on how we can enforce that. So that is where we're at.
What are the numbers this week, last week? As far as the increase in COVID.
In Gibson County, I did not run the numbers yesterday. We average, I'll just tell you what we're averaging. We're averaging fifteen to twenty new cases a day, give or take some. And then our max was a couple weeks ago, we had thirty-one new cases. We had twenty-nine new cases one day over the weekend. So we're averaging fifteen to twenty a day is what we're averaging. So our numbers are up significantly. Whenever you figure September and October, we were, we doubled what we had been in September, and we will be real close to doubling that again. So I'm gonna say somewhere around four hundred cases. That was, that was diagnosed in October, so no, those, it was approximately four hundred fifty. Okay, four hundred fifty. I knew that we had quite a few. Like I said, I didn't run those numbers this morning since September. Yes. Eventually, I wanna say it was two sixty-five, that's just going off memory.
Then you're having problems with contact tracing.
Right, correct.
With the state.
Yes, the state has.
People, are the four hundred fifty quarantined, quarantining themselves, or are they by, part of that?
Some are, and some obviously do not.
How does four fifty, how many are on the hospital? You know?
No, I do not. I can get you some numbers. I'd have to go to our dashboard and look at that, and I was all yesterday, but I didn't update on that, but.
About the Vandenberg County Hospital, what's your status on respirators?
We're sitting okay in Vandenberg. I mean, it's continually going up, but we still have some.
We don't have any patients here at this hospital. I see.
We do. I think there's five ventilators available.
Here, they all take them.
Not that I'm aware of, no. And they don't report to us every morning. They report to the state, so it would be on the dashboard. That's a real good place. The state gets that data and updates it every day.
Whenever this first began, the governor put a closure order, right, in Vandenberg. So if the governor, I assume, has the authority to do what you work, I mean, they have directed from the state before, and you're current. Problem that you brought up on food status, that's done through the state.
Well, and it's also done through a policy through the health department, because we can, we issue food license.
But you're authorities through the state, right?
Uh, well, and our board too, and our health officer. So the state has asked that, that the each county as individual on how they want to enforce that. You can be stricter than the state policies, depending on your status, or you can just kind of go with the state.
Have you had to shut down any businesses at this point?
We just initiated that, so we wouldn't be that far into the process.
Right, so I mean, actually by request, or you're on food, then you're just working evidently. And I mean, you know, as far as complaints, you know, you said you had some, I mean, I, but I would hope that the businesses upon request would, you know, do that about some kind of, and we don't have a commissioner's court in place, so enforcement would be. I'm not sure, now you're, and you, again, you have. But as far as us, we don't have a commissioner's court, so somebody reviews, say, there's nowhere to take it. I would hope that through, again, requests, of course, you're talking about the other businesses, they would cooperate, and they are basically, right?
We have some businesses that actually have signs on their doors that says, we love to see your smiling face. We do not require masks.
Well, I think we need more data of how many you come up with and say.
Okay.
Second thing, Mary's out. So if you want to, we need to come back and bring this up again at the next meeting. Maybe you'll have more data for it.
Okay, as we, now, we do not go into every business. We go into all the restaurants. That's how we know what they're doing. We don't inspect every business, so I would have to get staff out to inspect the businesses.
Now, we're just asking you do, what kind of data you come back with on businesses that you do inspect.
Okay, but that's the, we've already got something in place for them. What I'm trying to address is the businesses that are not covered by the food.
I understand that, but we'll bring that up at the next meeting with Mary to have a opinion on.
Okay. And I will try to get some data together. With that being said, I guess we can move on to the topic, unless you, you've got something you would like to.
I have a question before I continue, is can you go into a food establishment and your, you can require their employees to wear a mask, but you cannot require the customers that come in?
That's correct. It is, the requirement we have for restaurants is for the employees, the staff. We cannot control what their, their patrons are doing.
But if they do have a sign on the door that says they must wear a mask, and they're not, and leave, they can't ask them to leave.
That's correct.
And then if they don't leave, they would be pressed out. Is that not fair? So, I mean.
And certain businesses are much more effective, have you wearing masks than others. I think everybody's seen that. Okay, the second agenda. Do you have something else you'd like to say?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, my name is G D. Guard, and I'm from the Owensville area, and I was here at the previous commissioners meeting and was encouraged to come back when the county health department could be here. First, I want to thank Andrea Howe of the Princeton Daily Clarion for her daily articles on COVID on the front page of the paper. And she gives the counts and the increases for Gibson County and the surrounding counties in Indiana, as well as in Illinois. Coupes also to Ms. Hornby and the Gibson County Health Department for doing what they can do so that masks are worn correctly in food establishments and monitoring other mitigating factors. The three main mitigating factors that can be done reasonably and very inexpensively are masks worn correctly, social distancing, and hand hygiene. Some people forget or choose not to believe that masks are for health and safety of all. I wear my mask to protect you. I hope that you wear your mask to protect others. There was a study at the University of Kansas of twenty counties in Kansas that mandated masks and eighty-five counties that did not. And if any of you have ever driven from Kansas, from St. Louis to Colorado, it's a long, long, big state. And these particular twenty counties with mask mandates were throughout the state, not just a cluster of twenty. And what they found was the ones that had with mask mandates had about half the rise in COVID cases or rate of rising COVID cases as the eighty-five that did not. There was also an NPR program recently that I read the transcript and also listened to, and they were interviewing a doctor. He was an M D. as well as a sociologist, and he was the director of the Human Nature Lab at Yale University. He wrote a book called Apollo's Arrow and a Deal with the Coronavirus Pandemic. And he states that in a pandemic, first come lies, then come denials, and finally grief, and that grief is for the loss of our way of life, and I'm sure all of us have felt that. And anyway, he said that pandemics end. They all will end. Some by a better standard of living or non-pharmaceutical intervention. Non-pharmaceutical interventions, think mask, social distancing, and hygiene. He said you cannot use just one of these. Any mitigating factor is not just one. You need to have a layering, and he used the example of, think about Swiss cheese. Swiss cheese has these random holes in the slice. And if you're making a sandwich and you put down one slice, then you put another slice, and then you put a third slice, eventually those holes, you won't be able to see through, because those holes have, were random, and they disappeared. And he thinks that also that is mitigating, inexpensive mitigating factors or like that. You can't just do masks. You can't just do social distancing. You can't just do the hand hygiene. You need to be doing all three of those. He also stated that he thought a vaccine would be available in twenty twenty-one. And I think we've heard that on numerous sources. But there will also have to be manufacturing, how do we get the numbers that we need to vaccinate people here in the United States as well as throughout the world? There will be a distribution problem. Most of the ones that look like they're there or coming along quite quickly have cold change, meaning they have to be kept under very cold temperatures until a point of use. And along with that, there has to be an acceptance. Will people accept having a vaccine? So we think that twenty twenty-two, we will have a mass vaccine, but we will also still need to be wearing masks, and he thinks, now I've kind of found in my head, that, you know, by twenty twenty-four, we will possibly see the end of this pandemic. So, anyway, it's kind of what, what can we do in Gibson County to lower the risk to our citizens, to take the pressure off of not only our local hospital, but area hospitals? And by lowering the number of COVID cases, we will be helping the economy too. At this point, as the, as the COVID rates rise, people have a tendency to withdraw. That means they're not going out to eat, not going to stores. And so they become kind of withdrawing, and that sort of comes. Now, Gibson County Health Department has taken the first step. Food establishment will be keeping the customers safe, as I just have asked. What are the customers doing to keep the staff safe? When they come in without a mask on, and I think the standard is you wear a mask till you're seated, and then while you're eating, you can take the mask off, of course, and then you put it back on. So they, without, with people walking into a restaurant not having to wear a mask, they are risking the health of the employee. Now, I have a standout here, and it's from Reed Health in Richmond, Indiana. There are others that I've seen from Washington University that are very, very simple, but this one I thought was very simple. If these, I could go through the commissioners. Anyway, and. But it states on here that at least forty percent of people who spread the virus don't even know they're sick, they're asymptomatic. And I think this shows very simply, how if I'm wearing a mask, I'm really not protecting myself. I'm protecting you in case I would happen to be one of those asymptomatic people. So if you're not wearing a mask, my mask does very little protection to protect me if you were COVID positive. So I think that this, I'm just showing that. Now, some people might say that this infringes upon my personal freedom if I have to wear a mask. Well, I think personal freedom ends when it starts to harm someone else or endanger someone else. So wearing a mask is a justified infringement on personal freedom. Wearing a mask is part of the social contract. This means we're setting aside our selfish desires for thinking of others. Now, Gibson County is a majority Christian county, and I believe everyone would be able to find numerous biblical references to thinking of others first, such as love one another, love your neighbor as yourself. of others first, such as love one another, love your neighbor as yourself, in humility, count others before yourself, and let no one seek his own good that the good of his neighbor. So just as I asked two weeks ago, what will commissioners do to keep our county safer and lead as an example to other counties in the area? Commissioners, I await your response.
Thank you very much. I have, I think that we have moved Diane coming on with this from their board of directors. This is the next step. And, uh, Mary will be back next meeting and we'll go from there. Thank you.
You want to address this at the evening meeting there? Is that correct?
Yes, Mary could be back then.
Okay.
Getting, going to the second part of what I had on the agenda today. So what is, um, we know that the care funding has been dropped to the county. And my emergency preparedness coordinator has addressed this. The IT grant that we were to get from the State Department of Health to update our computer needs was dropped, and so we will not be getting that money. So, you know, a couple of weeks ago, our server went down for about three days. And obviously, during a pandemic, your computer system going down is really unacceptable. So, um, one other thing that...
Jim?
And so, with that being said, um, we are requesting that part of the CARES funding, and I know that I will go to the council related to this also, would be to update our server, which I just brought the parish estimate for what, whenever we have the grant, the IT grant. So it kind of gives you an idea of what this server would be. And then, um, you know, I'm sure we'd have to get a new estimate just related to that. Also, our phone system, what we're running into is I have two lines at the health department. That is really inefficient at this time. We have two nurses that are on the phone almost all day making calls to people related to their COVID infection or, you know, you know, there are just people calling us repeatedly throughout the day, the school system, residents in the county. So we need to upgrade our phone system so we can at least get, I prefer at least one to two more lines because I don't see that this is going away. But at this time, people can't call us frequently because we're on the phone all night long. So our request is that we can upgrade our server because parish, you can discuss with them, but our servers, they've been telling us for two or three years, it needs to be replaced. And I'm afraid we're going to go down about the time we get vaccines in, and we're going to really need our computer system.
Yeah, I'd be buying this all up to the council.
I, I just wanted to make sure.
So you can discuss your budget now, but what's kind of next step on that? Because at one time, we were told that CARES Act provides $100,000 for the IT. Then we were told that that was removed. But now you're saying you're, in all this request, this, this CARES Act, correct?
The IT grant was with the State Department of Health. It was not part of the CARE.
Okay.
It was separate. And so that was the grant that was dropped, and they said that it could be covered by the CARES funding is what we were told at the state level. I also, I think I forwarded it to you all. I had Kevin look into if the CARES funding would cover this extent. And then we got a reply from the state, very much so it would be covered under the CARES funding.
Well, so, really, I don't think we need to...
No, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. And then the other issue of bringing up the vaccines, we are, have turning in our plans by December the first on how we will administer vaccines for Gibson County. I know that we're anticipating ending them the first part of next year. And so with that, that is why we have requested out of that CARES funding to do some sort of a mobile clinic. The trailer that we have at the health department now does not have any refrigeration nor water. If you take a staff out, it doesn't have a bathroom. Originally, um, we were given a quote from, if you look at that JHB group, that is the one that the firefighters, and it is basically a box trailer with, um, different packages to add into it, but their, their estimate was $98,000. So when I seen that, I'm like, whoa, that's really high. Let's look into some other trailer options. And so that is why I have the other two options that I presented. We did find a toy hauler that would have the back end to be a separate clinic area for handicaps, so they could come in through the gate that would drop down, have a bathroom and a sink in the back, as well as the front of the trailer would have two doors where they can come through, walk through, get their equipment, and go out the other side. However, that cannot be pulled by the, our truck is too heavy. So we've looked into some other options, which are much less expensive than the trailer that the state had proposed as to buy. There's toy haulers that are a full-size trailer that our truck could handle. And that second is kind of a layout of that. And you can see, um, obviously, the front of the trailer, we would make into an office instead of having that bed. And then the kitchen would have to have a full-size refrigerator unit, which would make it a little more expensive. But that way, if staff are out and they're doing testing, there is a bathroom there and a little sink, or if they need to take a shower, that would be available on one of those kind of units opposed to just a box trailer. So we're just asking that you kind of take that into consideration. I know it's not totally up to you guys, but we do want you to be on board, that we are trying to spend the money wisely, but get something that would be, we could use and go out into the public, you know, and provide a mobile clinic, basically. One more thing is with the CARES funding, um, you know, it is paying for the screenings at the courthouse. So what we're running into, because there's so many problems with the state contact tracing, that Dana and I is trying to contact everybody that's positive throughout the county. Obviously, that's a lot of phone calls. And so, um, I'm requesting that, uh, I have one of the nurses that is hired for the testing site be able to come to the health department a few days a week to help us with those phone calls, especially when we come in on Monday, if we don't work over the weekend, like last weekend, we were $60,000 when we came in on Monday. So, um, I just, again, I know the council has to approve that, but I also want you all to be on board with that. And then the last thing is that our COVID testing site, the health department will be taking over the testing site next Monday, the 16th. It's next Monday, no, two weeks. It's November the 16th. Optum will be leaving, and we will be managing the testing site. I do have staff hired, and we're in the process of getting them trained. Part of that process is working with Dana and I because there's a lot of questions asked when people go get tested as to what they need to do. And so obviously, they'll be working with us in the office to get some training. We're going to do, um, a run next week and actually do some specimens on staff and make sure that we got everything going. So we'll be doing that next week, and then we'll be open for business November the 16th at the fairgrounds.
As far as sharing that at that testing site, there will be no charges anymore.
That's correct. It is. We don't even take your insurance information. The hours will be Monday and Tuesday, 10 to 6:00, Thursday and Friday, 10 to 6:00, and Saturday, 10 to 2:00.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Jim?
Morning. Uh, I ask Mr. McDonald and the commissioners to review the agreement for liability. Well, basically, this is down through the main medical supply provider, remember, um, was spending close to $80,000 to $85,000 a year with them, plus supply. This agreement would allow us access to their OB-QI program. Basically, it helps us with accountability as far as our inventory. It also tied to batteries, and they'll be able to launch and monitor things, see what to order. And also helps the crew being more accountable, or checking out the vehicles in their operation day. And basically, it's a pretty good system to have as far as keeping things aligned, keeping our inventory where it needs to be, and our cost down. There's no actual cost for us to use this program because we spend so much money every year without...
I've checked on this, Mr. Chairman, before. We've discussed it, and the county attorneys looked at this agreement and says, you know, it proves that the agreement. So I made a motion to, uh, enter an EMS down free licensing agreement with the county.
Okay. Steve made a motion. I'll second it. Any more discussion?
All favoring motion, and it gets a high.
All with eyes having two votes. Okay. That is Jim?
All right.
Okay, thank you. TMMI, block four, and Maple Tree Drive, and Pooch.
Good morning, Tony, my name is Gibson County Economic Development Corporation. We've been fortunate here in Gibson County that during the last few months with the problems the pandemic has caused employers, that Toyota has continued to do well. They're doing so well, in fact, that there are some improvements needed to help the traffic and safety issues there. And today, we have Mike Wingo, senior manager of maintenance, here to explain the initiatives they have.
Good morning.
Good morning. Great to see you today. Again, I'm Mike Wingo, the senior manager of maintenance at TMMI. I recently celebrated my 23rd year service, and, you know, very proud of my work there. Feel very blessed, very fortunate to be a part of such a dynamic company. And I've always respected the relationship that TMMI has with county commissioners, and certainly appreciate your support on our previous projects that have not only increased the safety and the traffic congestion and flow for our teams, but also the citizens of the county. I'd like to recap just a little bit about where our company's been and kind of worked with government to set up the purpose of the day to replace this initiative. We started out building our very first Tundra in December of 1998. It's about 1,200 employees. And our first year volume target was 175,000 units. By 2010, we had reached 4,000 team members. And the significant things that happened between 1998 and 2010, as you recall, were we introduced the Sequoia to the West Plank. So the West Plank built the original Tundra. And during that era, we also converted it to the Highlander. The Tundra is now being built, same Tundra in Texas. The second thing that happened in the early 2000s was we expanded the plant significantly while we called East Plank, which was built to primarily build, build a CNM. Today, it also builds a Highlander. And so, fast forward to 2018, we have about 6,300 TMMI team members and LT team members. And that year, we built 422,000 vehicles. And so, as you guys know, recently, we invested $1.3 billion into the plant side, which gives us a total investment of about $5.8 billion. We also continue to hire new team members. And because of this recent addition to the plant, we added 550 additional positions, giving us a total headcount on the property side, property side of 7,200 TMMI employees. It's not uncommon, though, for us to have additional people above that, first, live support people, the people that, for example, prepare their food, people clean the restrooms, all kinds of support in to produce these significant amount of vehicles every day. So that totals about 8,200 people. In addition to that, when we have these major expansion projects going on, as we've recently done, we'll have 500 construction workers on site. All this adds to the confusion, the complexity of the traffic flow. And as you'll remember, about 60% of the volume is being carried by the West Plank historically. And therefore, our past projects have kind of addressed those issues. And we're going to have a map up here, I want to kind of give you some orientation. John's going to help me with the, the video part of this, but, uh, you know, we have, so our West Plank is kind of this area right here. So this is north, and then this is Highway 41, and this is kind of the U2 area, and so we're working on 41. So this side is our West Plank, where we began, we built the Highlander and the Sequoia, both of those are SUVs. And then in the, kind of the library of vehicles is our East Plank. So as you know, we have done projects together at 350 and what we call 203. We significantly improved the safety of this area for everyone involved with the addition of stoplights and to the traffic flow. And then we had a major project also on the south side by the childcare center. And so those things have certainly improved the safety for everyone involved who travels in this area. And so we have just recently gone through a brand-new Highlander upgrade. And so about a year ago, both plants, we've built the Highlander, we finished up the old model and started up the new model. So we are now in full production, both plants for the Highlander. We're currently, I mean, even today, we're, we're ramping up a new CNM. It's very uncommon for any auto building manufacturer to have two major model changes in a year's time, but we're going through it currently. Now, this ramp up will finish up in December. And so because of, of all this, the new model, the new team members, all the additional volume, we've actually started running faster. We're, we're having more volume out of our East Plank. The idea is to get more of the 50/50 alignment between the two plants. And so about a year ago, we're going to talk about block four. About a year ago, we started having issues in block four with the traffic congestion. Again, we spent the majority of our energy on the, the west side, and now the east side was highlighted as a problem. And so there's about four or five main problems with this lot. Again, this is kind of the east assembly area. This is east paint and east body weld. And the team members that park in this lot typically support those shops and then those associated team members. But you'll notice, number one, there's really only one traffic light on, this is Maple Tree. There's not a traffic light here to turn on the 100. Uh, number two is this parking lot, even though it's been expanded twice, which you can tell by a little bit of the difference in gray, it's been expanded twice, and it only holds about 1,600 cars. And we actually have 2,700 cab reeds that go through this. There is a cab reed right here for the turnstile. Goes through about 2,700 cab reeds per day. Then there's a, if you'll notice, there's also one way in instead of two. And we learned over the years that with the right emergency, we can't get team members in or out of a parking lot in the right situation, which is a total disaster. Also, on this incoming road, there's only one road, one lane in, which is definitely a lot of new, that contributes to the, to the issue. And then finally, I'd like to mention, even the location of Maple Tree Drive, it kind of landlocked us for the expansion of block three, which takes out the sanding area and some of the volume of team members. which takes out the sanding area and some of the volume of team members. This is the contract parking area, and then we have truck parking that supports the delivery of all the parts that takes to build a vehicle. And so none of those could be expanded to the south currently. And so as we, as you recall, we came earlier in the year and we requested financial support for the engineering study to decide what the county countermeasures could be done. And we're gonna talk about those countermeasures, but first I wanted to show you some videos just to kind of highlight what the real problem is. So we are standing on the north side of Lot four, we're looking south. And so these cars, as you see in this queue, they're lined up to go into Lot four, which is this area right here. And you'll also notice this is Maple Tree headed to one hundred on the east side of the plant, and this is, of course, Maple Tree going back. And it's a little difficult to see because of all the trees we have on site, but this traffic headlights go all the way back to Port Range. Now, I traveled this way myself, and I can tell you that this line of traffic ends the right-hand lane. That there are a lot of people in the left-hand lane going to other businesses and traveling, and it's a safety issue for everybody that travels on Highway forty-one, which is probably the main artery southwest Indiana, for sure. And so you'll notice that very slow moving in, kind, now, again, this is about six o'clock AM in the morning. And you'll notice on one hundred, you can see the headlights coming towards you, and then the taillights that are queuing up going south, turning into the lane, very far to the north. And so, one of the challenges that we talked about was this stoplight situation. So you look right here, the people that are on two of the tree that are trying to turn to go north on one hundred, the only hope they have getting out is if some nice person allows them to turn in front of them. Okay, thanks. Thanks for the view. This one's a little bit to show how congested this parking lot is. Again, we have all these people all through right here in all these directions that need to find parking spots. And then, of course, this is our day shift coming into work, and night shift, of course, is trying to go home. Now, the other thing that raises problem is weather. You know, we have good weather in this video, but if it's snowing, raining, it certainly impacts how slow this is. And we have studied how long it takes that team member right there to work his way up to Maple Tree and into a parking spot. And it's over thirty minutes for that team member, once they're on our plant side, to actually get into a parking spot. And as you're also aware, we take attendance very seriously, so one minute late is a very big problem for them, so we have to cover that with some form of vacation time. Because we need everyone there to start a shift to build the vehicles. So you can envision the level of frustration that our team member is feeling, the pressure of needing to get to work and then having this backlog. And this same view, you know, you're looking south, just want you to see that there are the two lanes that are exiting Lot four, but there's only one lane coming in against the bottleneck. And just kind of one more time, I think that I saw the fact that that is a forever lane. Not to mention, when we back up on Highway forty-one, chances of introducing a rear-end collision extremely high, because a typical person's not expecting you to stop on Highway forty-one on that. So having said that, you know, we, something I want to highlight is we realized this was a problem about a year ago, roughly twelve months ago. And we certainly started working on countermeasures because we knew that this problem wasn't going to go away. But what happened to us, as we began to study and figure out exactly what were the issues and how could we address them effectively, the COVID pandemic hit our plant just like it did everyone else in this world. And as you know, we shut down for seven weeks. And being honest with you, there was a pretty time in those seven weeks where we weren't sure what the need for our logics would be. We were very concerned, but we spent, as they lifted about money, making the changes, you know, that were actually covered earlier, to make those changes for the team members so that we could get back to work to produce our vehicles. And unfortunately for us, and a little bit surprisingly, the volume of mass on our plants extremely high, we're continuing to work overtime. And so the future is very bright. We cannot predict what the economy is going to do, but the future is very bright, and the demand is very high. And frankly speaking, we cannot produce enough vehicles currently, you know, because the demand is higher than our production. And so the need is significant, we feel like the need is going to continue to be there, and so we need to address these immediate five problems that are discussed with you earlier. And so I'd like to introduce Dan Sherman from BLN Engineering, who's going to kind of review the kind of proposal to address those issues and then also the costs. And of course, I'm willing to take questions now, or really take questions after this presentation. I really appreciate the time to present this problem to you.
Thank you, Mike. Morning, everyone. I'm gonna hand these out. This is a copy of our proposed solution to the problems that Mike discussed. You can go ahead and play that video. What this is, is the simulation of the solution. We first built a model that mimicked the traffic congestion that Mike described. And then we took our proposed solution and built the model, and as you can see, it flows very well. There's some traffic packing up on Maple Tree, some of that is related to the stable timing to not overstack this area. You want to play that again for me? Thank you. I will get to all the individual pieces of our improvement here in a moment. The key was just to show that we're introducing three new signalized intersections, two access roads, and it provides a significant improvement to the existing congestion that Toyota has had and has been experienced, has been experiencing. As I showed in all those three aerial videos. And this is simply a copy of what I handed out. This is the overall improvement. Again, this is the plant north is oriented up on this figure. You have the lot, Lot four, that we're expanding to thirty-one hundred parking spots. Mike mentioned that they have an average daily tag reading of twenty-seven hundred, thirty-one hundred number. You know, it's your ten, ten percent contingency in there for days when they have more than their average reading. You can see, we're providing two accesses to the site. We're providing one here with a signalized intersection and a second one here. And each of these routes has two lanes in and two lanes out. If you think back to what Mike was showing, where they have existing one lane in and two lane out, without, now transitioning to a, to a scenario where you'll have two in and two out here, and two in and two out here. That's one of the primary reasons that that video works so well of the simulation. We are also adding a signalized intersection here. We are widening County Road one hundred to provide three-lane section through the improvement. And the night towards the future, we are relocating Maple Tree Drive to the south. This allows for future expansion of Lot three, expansion of the truck and tractor parking, as allows us to build this intersection, this intersection, and not need to relocate them to the future. This is Lot four that came here. A nice feature that we, that we're showing, and also safe spots, relieving most of the containment and blocking it off with manualized gates. It'll hopefully save money on construction, it also will allow our total security access around the site, allowing you to use the routes that the general public and, uh, to other team members using. Alright, so this is the block of, this is the new south access road at relocated Maple Tree Drive. This is the intersection that's shifted to the south, roughly three hundred feet. This is gonna be a signalized intersection, you can note it will provide a free-flowing westbound return into the plant. You can see here that there's two lanes into the plant, two lanes out. We're estimating that this intersection is gonna see at least forty percent less traffic than its existing condition because of the split that'll allow the traffic to inform the parking lot to access it via one of the two access roads. Okay, this is moving east. This is relocated Maple Tree and County Road one hundred. We're adding a new traffic signal here. We are extending a four-lane section from this location on County Road one hundred all the way to the west of County Road Maple Tree. You can see there's a residence here, this driveway is actually gonna get added to the traffic signal number for them to provide, for us to provide them safe passage to and from their home. This is the location that Mike mentioned, and take team members as much as thirty minutes or more to navigate their way through the site to the north end of Lot four. We ran the calculations in our simulation, and we expect that number to drop from thirty-plus minutes down towards a number that's ninety to ten minutes. So that's a significant amount of savings. We'd expect at least an average of a twenty-minute time savings on someone coming to the plant from traversing this, coming off County Road one hundred. Alright, this is the third of the signalized intersections. This is the new Lot four access road. This bends around the fast track that's shown on the figure, if you haven't found you. Like, the other access road, we're providing a free-flowing right car condition in, there's two lanes in, two lanes out. This will be signalized, this is adjacent to the, the truck business across the street from County Road one hundred, this is to have access to the Gibson Water Power. Something to consider with this is, we've counted traffic up here, and we use that to build our model. When a shift ends, we expect as many as four hundred and fifty people to make a left turn here. So now by, by now, by having a direct connection to County Road one hundred, they no longer need to traverse the south access road and use those two intersections. The first one would be access drive to Maple Tree, the second one being the Maple Tree, County Road one hundred intersection. Okay, now this is rotated to the right, north is to the right. I apologize, it's a little hard to see. We turned off the shading so that you can see where the existing Lot four is. The plant is just off the screen, that's the access point of the building where it was tagged around. This is the existing Lot four entrance where you've got signaling up and two lanes leaving. You can see this expanded to thirty-one hundred parking spots. So I know that it asks us to, we're gonna divide these lots into two, but we're gonna do it with temporary barricades so they can adjust the split between south and north based on where their team members are traveling from and the demand around the lot. You can see, there's, I know it's a tad hard to see, it shows up better on the figures that I handed out, because this is the north access road, there's four, two lanes in, two lanes out. Likewise, the south access road, two lanes in, two lanes out. And now they're also separated into, they have, there's two separate access points to the lot. So not only are we taking one lane in and not only taking a four, and taking two lanes out and making that four, we're taking the one access spot, one access point and splitting it into two. Again, north is rotated to the right. I had to rotate this to get a bit on the slide, it's a little bit better. This shows the two new access roads in a little bit more detail. See how south access takes off here from relocated Maple Tree, and the north access takes off here from County Road one hundred, adjacent to that truck business. There's our toll road and access to the water tower. And finally, this, we're back to north being up again. This is relocated Maple Tree, this is existing Maple Tree, Lot three, truck parking. County Road one hundred is over here. You can see this as approximately three hundred and twenty feet, twenty-five feet to the south, which provides lots of space for future roads here, Lot three, truck parking lot. And it provides a nice new four-lane section from here all the way across. As you can kind of see it lines a little bit, there's significant bottlenecks in here as well, that's solved with the four-lane all the way across, because the, I should call it, like, there's a short segment, this is three lanes, because there's so many vehicles coming, so we were able to reduce the lane count right here for westbound. Alright, this is the overall again. Again, north is up, I just wanted to bring this back to your attention again to recap everything we've talked about, the lot expansion, the two access roads influenced County Road one hundred, the three signalized intersections, and relocated Maple Tree.
That's a question.
Sure, sure.
All of this expansion and everything deals with congestion on plant side. With this, that's not true. Well, my question is, with the added lanes and everything, what's that got to do to County Road one hundred east-south, and six hundred south, and then one seventy-five east? Dumping all of those vehicles on the two-lane county roads, will it not just move the lot away?
We don't expect that, no. We, alright, we did, we did talk about that in the meeting, our traffic policy. And our assumptions were, and this is backed up with discussion we had with Toyota, that this, like, particularly this intersection, it would provide a clearer path for team members from this lot that are already going north. So if suddenly they leave, if their shift ends and they leave, and they're destined for points north on here, now they no longer have to come here to here over. It just provides them to.
Quicker access to three fifty.
Yes, yeah, that was, that is what we looked at in our modeling, proved that, that we don't expect a significant, rerouting effect due to this. Our intent was to provide better paths for people to make the movements they're already making, if that makes sense. Alright. This is the slide you've been waiting for, right? Actually, this is all my thoughts. The bottom line number is thirteen million nine hundred and one thousand dollars. That's the total product cost. If I can, these are, I don't necessarily need to read these, but we have an additional fee for design, this nine nine seven number, this nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand is the construction inspection fee estimate for many consulting, and that is our current construction process unit, just shy of twelve point seven million. Alright, so what are our takeaways? What we've done, what we've shown, we feel is more effectively gonna handle the traffic, not only on Toyota's property, but in and around Toyota, and so on, County Road one hundred. We feel that there's benefits to everyone using the roads in this area, not just Toyota employees, of the benefits for everyone, including County Roadways. We feel that the congestion is gonna be reduced significantly. The simulation that we showed, moves that, this is gonna result in shorter travel times for everyone. When there's less, you know, shorter travel times, less queuing, less of what we call a jam condition, where there's more traffic than the road can allow, and you get significant backups, that's what leads to safety issues, you get a lot of rear-end crashes, you get turn crashes. We expect those to be announced in a family, providing a series of roadways that's more aligned with the traffic that is using this area. And to point back to the speed on the Maple Tree Drive, most everything we're doing was for future growth of that, without any other cost on, paying for this place. So, are there any other questions?
Michael, you know, I was gonna mention with, I mean, the superintendent's question, that's been looked at, actually, because the plant is safer, because he won't have to queue back there, so. That's, as he mentioned, that's really been looked at, and as Mike Wingo mentioned, we've been looking at this for over a year. The causing the COVID situation has stalled, so it's really.
You can do that, share that.
It's really been looked at, not only by engineering firms, probably by accountants, but Toyota, engineers, all the way, I guess, to play the vice, I think, but, so this has really been better. Very carefully, but yet, you know, has been other scenarios looked at with cost with that. And the fact that the intent of the fifth money is to primarily, the initial intent of the fifth money is primarily to benefit the district. This is actually in the fifth district, competing both accounting, taxpayer, and the, in the fifth district. I make a motion to move this project to the redevelopment commission in the amount of thirteen eight nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars.
Okay, motion's been made, but Steve seconded by myself. Is there any more discussion? Yes, gentleman in the corner.
Mr. Chairman, my full brain, I'm semi-retired from Ivy Year of sixteen, and over the years, Toyota's been great partner with us. And one of the things I like about Toyota is their transparency in the community. But they're a great asset community, and Mike told a lot of the numbers over the years, of the people that stand job, enjoying the latest event experiment. But I think one of the things to look at here, probably as you mentioned, is all of that, not that that's not important, because it's all important. But I think that one of the big things to look at here is, is the safety part of it. And that's where I can throw in the construction, so I can rise and support that, and we ask you to improve.
Okay, all in favor of this motion, and it gives an aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Ayes have it, two vote.
And, Mr. Chairman, we did want to with, in fact, attention upon funding for this project, we want to do an agreement on
BLM.
For BLM, but also, and, and also, of course, being represented here at United, Sturrock Meister, who, and these firms have worked hard with us on all these projects that have been brought out about. Of course, all have been very successful. The last lot two project came in seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars under budget. But so I made my move to, again, approve this supplemental agreement, number one, with BLM, B M O S N E T, and then the agreement with United Consulting on project inspection, management and inspection.
Steve made a motion, all seconded. Any more discussion? I think to make favor, United Company will be doing the inspection on this project.
Project management and inspection.
That's Sturrock. In all favor of the motion, and it gives an aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Ayes have it, two vote. Okay, that's all. Toyota will go to Family Medical, will you?
I'll move to accept the Family Medical.
Okay, a motion's made for Steve seconded. And there will not be any discussion. And favorite motion, and it gives an aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Ayes have it, two vote.
Did anybody else come to the meeting to address the board? Thank you for everybody coming.